All right. Thank you, everyone, for being here. We will call this December 21, 2020 meeting to order, and we will start with an invocation from Dr. Jones. Everyone, please stand.
Let us pray. Lord, in a season when every heart should be happy and light, many of us are struggling with the heaviness of life, burdens that are stealing the joy from Christmas. Even today, we remember our own employee, Melanie Jennings. We pray for her entire family as this past Friday she lost her husband, known affectionately as Bug. Bring peace to her family. As we know COVID is continuing to strike so many people and interrupting the lives of so many families. Tragedy arrives as victims continue to suffer. Lord, we need your peace. In a world where worry, not peace prevails, stir up that good news again this Christmas. Make it real in our hearts. Never have we needed your joy and peace now more than ever. Thank you for the gift of your son. Forgive us for forgetting that your love never changes, never fades, and that you will never abandon the purpose for which you came into the world. Thank you so much for our many blessings and remember those who were struggling this Christmas. We ask all of this in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Ms. Salter, if you will, please call roll.
Yes, sir. Mr. Gualtney?
Here.
Mr. -- I'm sorry, Ms. Geer?
Here.
Mr. Alamon?
Here.
Mr. Wolverton?
Here.
President Wyatt?
Here.
Mr. Sims?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Nels?
Here.
Mrs. Andress?
Here.
And Mr. Harden?
Here.
I started to have my sheets, I don't have enough memory, so they scared me up that way.
Keeping me on my toes. All right.
Do you have a form?
Thank you. Next, we have the minutes from December 14, 2020, that have been distributed by Ms. Salter. I would entertain a motion to dispense with the reading and for approval of those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gualtney, second by Mr. Sims. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to 0. Those are approved. All right, next is board vacancies and appointments. I know we've got a couple that are open until January, but I believe we have one additional one that we need to open for Ward 4 for BZA. It's a Ward 4 position, correct?
Yes. We need to open that up, and I guess we leave that open until April or whatever, correct? Or should we leave it open longer?
I'm just a little concerned with the holidays that we might need. If we could, I would suggest we leave it open until the 25th.
Okay. All right, so we'll do that.
They'll close at 4:30 on January 25th.
And then we'll see what we have.
Do what we have. Okay?
Sounds good.
And there's two, the Home Environmental Commission and the Arts closes on the 11th. We've had one applicant so far.
For HCC.
Okay. For what?
HCC.
We've had one, I think we've had an applicant for Arts happening this year. We have one for each so far.
Yeah, okay.
Just a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Will we eventually get a list of all the boards and upcoming vacancies? I was just wondering.
Yes, sir. We have a board vacancy list that we have on our website. I'll send it to you. We're in the process of trying to get all the boards updated and put on the website. We don't have that. I have a board contact sheet I can give you. We don't have them all on the website yet. We're in process, but we do have a vacancy list that we'll send to Brian again to update after the one y'all just opened. He posts it every Tuesday after a council meeting to open any position.
Okay. Well, I was just wondering more like long-term, just like we know all the board members and when their terms are going to expire so that we have a view from the next four years that we can.
Yes, sir. I have a book and I can send them to you individually, and we're trying to get them all on the website as well.
Okay. Thank you so much.
But I can send you all of them that we have in our book, yes, sir.
Great. Thank you.
All right. With that, we've got a number of additions to the agenda tonight. We will start with the items that are being added to old business. All right, the first is 03-06-20, request permission to place tables on city sidewalks at 2801 18th Street South for the Maple Street Biscuit Company, brought to us by Chris Sears and Greg Cobb.
He's just adding it right now.
Yes, you don't have to.
Sorry.
Sorry. Sorry. I promise we'll get to you really soon, though.
She's ready.
All right, next item, 02-12-20, request for a variance to install a front yard fence along the creek and request permission to work in the right-of-way to continue the fence along the top of the concrete guard adjacent to the street at 328 Kennelworth Drive, brought to us by Tori Anderson and Vicky Pappas, as well as Wyatt Pugh. And I believe that item is just going to be about setting a public hearing tonight. Next item, 03-12-20, request for permission to install a fence which extends 11 feet into the right-of-way at 401 Staret Avenue, brought to us by Cole and Catherine Kublick and Wyatt Pugh. That one also will be just a set of public hearing tonight. Next added item is 07-12-20, request for permission to install a parking pad in the city right-of-way at 506 Kennelworth Drive, brought to us by Bruce McLeod and Wyatt Pugh. And I believe that's it. Is that correct, Ms. Salter? Did I get that right?
Yes, sir. That's all for old business.
That's all for old business.
We have one that we have dedicated to sand.
Got it. All right, so next we've got three new items to add to committee referral. 12-12-20, request to declare the 1998 Pierce fire engine surplus, brought to us by Gordon James, Chief Nick Hill, and Lieutenant --
I'm sorry, it's Battalion Chief Broadhead.
That's not right, is it? Battalion Chief Broadhead.
It's been a tough day.
I know, I know.
I apologize.
Move him up.
It is Battalion Chief Broadhead. I apologize.
Wasn't me. Next item, 13-12-20, request to refund unused building permit per city code to Reeves Construction, brought to us by DZ Department and Finance Department. 14-12-20, request to authorize the mayor to sign the revised agreement with ALDOT related to -- I'm not going to read those numbers, but basically it's the Turkey Foot, brought to us by Wyatt Pugh and the Finance Committee. Then we have one item to add to other new business. That's 15-12-20, request to authorize the mayor to sign contract with Tyler Technologies to move the accounting software from a server to cloud-based system, brought to us by Mr. Yates and Mr. Burgett and Ms. Salter. And then lastly, one item to add to the consent agenda, and that is 17-09-20, request for consideration to vacate the alley adjacent to 329 Staret Avenue. All right, I think I caught everything. So with that, I would entertain a motion for approval of the amended agenda.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Harden, second by Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to 0. That brings us to the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to -- that item was dropped.
Correct. That item is dropped.
Okay. I just wanted to confirm. Thank you. I missed that earlier.
It wasn't dropped when we did the agenda, so we had to just add it to the map before that's written.
I'm with you.
All right, we've got a motion by Mr. Gualtney, second by Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
That wasn't an opposition, right?
No, she said aye.
Ms. Nels? Okay. All right. Thank you very much. All right, which brings us to the old business agenda. First item is 08-11-20, is public hearing set for January 11, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. for consideration of changing to the zoning ordinances. This will be carried over, and we will hear it at our next meeting on the 11th. Next item, 13-11-20, public hearing set for January 11, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. for consideration to rezone property at 2510 18th Street South from a C2 Neighborhood Shopping District to R7 Attached Dwelling Unit District. This item will also be carried over, and we will hear that on the 11th at the public hearing. Next item, 14-11-20, public hearing set for January 11, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. for consideration to rezone property at 75 Bagby Drive from C1 Office Building District to MXD Mixed Use District. That item will also be carried over and heard on the 11th. Next item, 15-11-20, is another public hearing set for January 11, 2021, for consideration to rezone property at 55 and 65 Bagby Drive from C5 General Business District to MXD. That item will also be carried over, and we will hear it on the 11th. All right. Next item, 03-06-20, request permission to place tables on city sidewalk at 2801 18th Street South for the Maple Street Business Company -- Biscuit Company, excuse me. Long night already. Chris Sears, brought to us by Chris Sears and Greg Cobb. Now we're ready.
Now you can come.
Come on up. And first, we'll have a report from Special Issues, Ms. Smith.
Okay, so we met right before here, right before this, and we have now accepted the work, partially accepted the work, that has to do with this curve, and we voted to allow Maple Street to put four tables onto the bulb out there. Ms. Geer? No, that's not true. Hold on, sorry. Motion was made. Oh, we have to include the insurance amount, and that was, we were pending that decision.
We have a $1 million incident, $2 million aggregate, and a $5 million umbrella.
Okay.
Fantastic.
So we will add those numbers into the agreement.
Not less than $1 million dollars?
Yes. And the -- I think Ms. Andress made that motion. Mr. Alamon seconded it, and it was approved 5 to 0.
And that was the drawing, was it?
Yes, I gave it to Brian in the back. Should be able to put it on the screen.
Oh, and then he can, yeah, there we go. And so he -- Brian, can you send that to Mike, please?
And?
And Melody?
Sure.
Okay, just send it to Melody, and she'll get it to Mike.
No problem.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
All right, so, yeah, motion to approve from Special Issues.
Okay. Mr. Gualtney?
Can you, I wasn't here for that part of the meeting. Can you just walk me through that picture with the blue tape on the ground?
So the darkened end is actually the light post. The one in front of it's a four-top. The one next to that's a four-top, and the one in front of that is a two-top. The one on the other side is a four-top. So it's three four-tops and one two-top.
Okay. And Brian, will you switch back to the other image? Thank you.
So as you say, there's more than enough room.
Okay, so that's with the -- perfect with the tables laid out. All right, my main concern was accessibility there.
Yeah.
Bulging out, so I'm good. The one, I looked back at my notes from this when we were discussing in committee. The one comment that I did receive from the mayor, then a counselor, was that Maple Street, be sure and care for the trash, so that the city employees are not having to go out there, you know, or have it overflowing trash can. So if y'all be sure and take care of that, that'd be great.
We can do that.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Mr. Wolverton?
So I believe this item was taking place, and I'm not on the committee, but I believe it was taking place while I was in transit over here, listening on Zoom. Can we clarify, was there a discussion about a railing going up or down?
Yes, so I talked to Mayor McCloskey, who was the one who suggested that we look into that, and what we've decided to do is Greg and Wyatt are going to go ahead and pursue that and do an examination to see if those are necessary, but we did not want to let this hold them up from getting their tables out, so we're going to go ahead and allow them to do their tables, but they are going to look into putting the rails up as well.
If I remember correctly, the only real concern about the doing a railing of sorts is?
Site.
Well, in addition to site, is not showing preferential treatment towards one specific business. Is that correct?
Well, it would just be a matter of safety, really, to --
This has nothing to do with public safety?
Yeah, it would be a public safety reason, which is the reason we have the rails like over in Hedgewood and also West Hemwood. So they're going to look into that and see if it's necessary. If it's necessary, we'll install those, but we're going to go ahead and let them put their tables out.
Just real quick, too, on that drawing of the table, the two tops, the orientation of those, will the chairs come, which direction? Yeah, it's hard to see. So the chairs won't come back into the walkway, they're oriented the other way? Okay. Just wanted to see that. Thanks.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Okay, then we have a motion from Special Issues. All in favor?
I'm making my -- to approve this as it stands, pending the -- well, no pending, actually, but, and we'll wait on the draw-ups for the revenue.
Okay. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's 21-87, correct, Ms. Salter?
20 dash 187.
Fantastic. All right. Next item, 02-12-20, request for a variance to install a front yard fence along the creek and request permission to work in the right-of-way to continue the fence along the top of the concrete guard adjacent to the street at 328 Kennelworth Drive. This item will require a special hearing, so we will set that for January 11 as well. We'll have a fun night that night.
It's going to be a fun night. I thought you meant --
Next item is 03-12-20, request permission to install a fence which extends 11 feet into the right-of-way at 401 Staret Avenue, brought to us by Cole and Catherine Kublick and Wyatt Pugh. This item will also require a public hearing, so we will set that public hearing for the 11 as well. Which brings us to 07-12-20, request for permission to install a parking pad in city right-of-way at 506 Kennelworth Drive, brought to us by Bruce McLeod and Wyatt Pugh, and we will have a report on this from Special Issues. Ms. Smith?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Okay. Wait, 06-12-20? What are we, 07-12-20? Sorry. Okay, there we are. Okay. The committee met before this and heard from Bruce McLeod, who is doing the drawings for the homeowner, to install a parking pad in our city right-of-way. The committee voted to approve allowing the work in the right-of-way with the indemnification agreements, and Mr. Alamon made the motion. I believe Ms. Andress seconded it, and that vote was 5 to 0.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments about this item? Just, Mr. Gualtney?
What was the material that was specified? I heard as I stepped out that it was changing.
I believe he said, I think he said concrete that would match the driveway concrete, and then he said, because there's, it shows in the drawing kind of stone material, but he said that was just kind of a conceptual, and he said he thought they were going to do concrete so that it would match the driveway since it's going to kind of abut the driveway.
Can --
Mr. Wolverton?
Yeah, Brian's got the image up there, so is it going, it's not going to take out the current mailbox, or?
No, I don't believe, well --
He's moving the mailbox.
He's moving the mailbox. He's moving the mailbox down so that the parking pad will essentially be right next to the driveway and all, right there, that, yes, right there. There you go. Thank you, Brian. And he's going to move the mailbox.
Okay. And just for clarification, what was the hardship? I don't remember.
Well, because I live on Crest Drive, I travel up and down Kennelworth, there's too many cars on the street, and so his effort was to get a car off the street so that there would not be, which, right where he is, is going up the hill, and there's typically cars parked on either side of the street, making it essentially a one-lane road.
Right.
So he wanted to get a car off the street.
I think there was also an issue with the narrowness of the driveway and getting in and out.
Yes, yes.
And Barry?
Yes.
There's also, you know, it causes problems with the stop sign right before it and after it.
Yep.
You know, if your car's on the road there, so it's, you know, a sightline safety issue there, when there's always somebody coming down and you've got to play, you know, chicken with the cars there.
Yeah, you're correct. You are correct. So, yeah, so that was the reason behind that.
Okay. Yeah, thank you for clarifying.
Any other questions or comments? So we have a motion from Special Issues. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also 11 to 0, and that will be Resolution 20-188. All right, which gets us to our committee referral agenda. Motion by Mr. Jones, is that second by Mr. Gualtney? Second by Mr. Gualtney. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 11 to 0 as well. Which brings us to other new business. 11-12-20, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for period of December 15, 2020 through December 21, 2020. That's it. Thank you. Last time, Dr. Jones.
Right, right. And I just want to share with you how exciting this can be. So I know you're going to be excited, Ms. Smith, next time. I approved an invoice for a cow eyeball dissection kit for the library. This incredible event is going to be held on January 12, where you can go and you can dissect a cow's eyeball.
Oh, my gosh.
So, I mean, this is exciting to be, to have these type of things. Every, I learn something new every day. I didn't know we were dissecting cows' eyeballs, but we are, and I would move to approve the vouchers for December 15 through the 21st.
Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Ms. Smith. Any other questions about the cow's eyeballs or anything else? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Very enthusiastic.
That is 11 to 0, which is, I lost my last one, 21-89. All right, and then our final item for tonight, 15-12-20, request to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Tyler Technologies to move the accounting software from a server to cloud-based system, brought to us by Mr. Yates, our IT Director, Mr. Burgett, our Finance Director and Assistant City Clerk, and Ms. Salter, our City Clerk and Assistant Finance Director. This was, let me provide a little bit of explanation for everyone so they understand why this was added like this as opposed to going through committee. This is an item that had already, has already been approved by the council many months ago, while we were waiting, quite frankly, on the software company to get to the point of taking us on, I believe, is the deal. We have now gotten to that point. Time is a little bit of the essence because what this will allow us to do is for city employees that are authorized to get, to be able to work remotely, which, given the current state of the world, is a pretty important thing, and if that comes up where we need them to work remotely, we need this to be in place. So waiting until the end of January to get it done, simply, I didn't think was an option. So we put it on the agenda tonight.
It is a budgeted item.
So as I understand it, there's nothing else we need to do other than, Mr. Burgett, is there anything we need to do besides just authorize the mayor to sign the contract? The item's already budgeted, nothing to do with that, correct?
That's correct. That'll move the process forward.
Okay.
Second.
Is that a second, Ms. Smith?
No.
Oh, sorry.
That was me.
Was it you?
Yes.
Sorry. Well, unless it was Councilor Andrews. I don't know. We'll go with you, Mr. Gualtney.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Jones and Gualtney, any other questions about that? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 11 to 0 and will be 20-190. And with that, we will get to the end of our agenda. The mayor is not here tonight because he's a little bit under the weather, nothing COVID or anything, but under the weather, so he's not here tonight. So we will start with Mr. Gualtney.
I have nothing to share except for Merry Christmas to everybody. Hope you have a safe Christmas.
Do you want to set public works?
Yeah, thank you, Bill. You're keeping me straight. Obviously, I'm -- finance, 5 o'clock. Mr. Jones, how long do you need?
Can I be?
15 minutes.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Just trying to stir the pot a little bit tonight. So for four years, finances met at 5 o'clock because of bond money items, and since those are all taken care of, were we ever going to get away from that preferential?
Well, we're not tonight, and then I'm going to let you and Mr. Jones fight that out, but tonight, we're going to stick with 5 o'clock. But I understand your point.
So I'll be setting public safety for 15 minutes at 5:30.
There we go.
When did you say 5:30?
Yes. All right. Thank you, Mr. Gualtney. Ms. Geer?
Okay, yes, I just want to say happy holidays to everybody, and if you haven't been by Berry Avenue to see Christmas on Berry, they have the light show going with the music. Please take your kids, because I think they might like it. It's pretty fun. That's it.
Thank you very much. Mr. Alamon?
I just want to wish everyone a Feliz Navidad y Prospero Ano y Felicidad, and, classic. I also just want to make sure that everyone knows that there's testing sites in Homewood at the Hispanic Interest College of Alabama today and tomorrow from 9:30 to 3:30 p.m. If necessary, you can still call and make appointments, and just want to thank Homewood City Schools and the Port of Education for extending the, coming back to school, make sure that our families are safe and our teachers are safe, and just, Homewood continues to astound me in the ways it continues to find solutions in a very difficult situation. So thank you. Happy New Year.
Thank you very much. Mr. Wolverton?
Yes, so I didn't explain too much last week, because quite frankly, I didn't know the full extent at that point in time, but, so, my father-in-law had a heart episode while captaining a boat out in the middle of the ocean by himself, and managed to get to the next closest island, called for help, ended up in a small local hospital. They flew him out immediately to Anchorage. So he had quadruple bypass surgery last Tuesday. Everything went well. He was discharged from the hospital Friday and cleared to fly back home today. He said he can only get the Incentives Perimeter with, which I'm not sure if any of you are familiar with, but it's a little device they want you to take deep breaths with. He's pissed because he can only get it up to 1,800 units, but otherwise, he is doing, you know, remarkably well, given that surgery less than a week ago. So thank you guys for thinking about him. Let's see. I also want to echo the sentiment about the school extending, you know, the timeline for coming back. I think that'll help give us a little bit safer buffer coming back. My wife might not live through it, but, you know, we're hoping that we can make some accommodations to try and figure that out. She joked with me when she saw the email last week. But I know it was, it was echoed last, last week, but I'd kind of forgotten. I did want to thank everybody that was involved in making the Christmas parade happen. It was a very long line. My wife unfortunately did not want me to ditch her with all four kids, so I didn't stand out with you guys, but we did go through. And so I thought everything went well and we made the most of a, you know, a challenging situation. So really, I think that's, that's about it. So public safety is set for fifteen minutes, you said, at five fifteen? Five thirty? Thirty minutes, okay. Thirty minutes for finance. Okay. I am hopeful that we will have something more concrete with the item that took a little while tonight. I will set, because I don't believe there's anything new, public, public works should be fifteen minutes, so we'll do that at five forty five.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Sims?
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to recognize Councilor Alamon for his sweater game this evening. I was trying to match that with the return of the Christmas loft, so I appreciate the, is that, is that an alpaca?
It's a llama.
It's a llama. Well, this is a squirrel, so. No. But no, in all seriousness, you know, I wish everybody a happy holidays and Merry Christmas. You know, Dr. Jones, you stated it at the outset, this has been a year, a tough year. So I just want to show my appreciation and thanks to all medical personnel, staff this year, teachers, all essential workers, people who put themselves at risk at times for the sake of common good and community this year. It's been a tough year and couldn't be here without those people who've been on the front lines every single day. With that in mind, happy winter solstice to all of y'all. I mean, kind of within the theme of hope and light, you know, today is the dark, you know, the longest day of darkness. And tomorrow, each day, we get more light and more hope, and we're going to go from there. And if because we're a strong community, we'll, we'll persevere. So thanks, Merry Christmas to y'all, and have a great holiday.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jones?
Yes, we will have finance at five. We've only, we've only done that for twelve years, Mr. Wolverton, but.
Has it been that long?
It has, it has, but I'm open to suggestions. I don't want to, I don't want to be the one that says, oh, we've always done that.
I was just under the impression it was the bomb because that happened right when we came on four years ago.
But anyway, thank you for indulging me tonight in the prayer. It has been an emotional day, as we've talked about. Going to the funeral today of Melanie's husband was, was, was tough. And I appreciate Beau and Robert and Melody going, and JJ came by. Yeah, so they, you know, they need our prayers. It's a tough time of year to lose a loved one, and I pray for your family as well, Mr. Wolverton. My dad had quadruple bypass at one point, and it's a, that's a major surgery. And I wish him the best and hope he continues to improve. And with that, obviously, wish everybody a Merry Christmas, happy holiday.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Ms. Smith?
Yes, I wanted to thank Mr. Jones for his beautiful prayer this evening. It really did. I think it's what we all needed to hear right now because there's just, it does seem like, like you said, the darkest day of the year. And it's felt like that for a long time, actually. So looking forward to some, some light coming. I will set special issues for six. And I assume all those, I don't know if all the folks who had public hearings set are going to come back for that meeting, but just in case, I'm going to go ahead and say thirty minutes, just to be safe.
And I don't have P and D, so.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, then, yeah, okay. So I can just go for hours.
Which we did tonight.
Yeah, which we did. I could do that again. We'll just see if I can, see if we can do that again. But otherwise, I just, it's been a real pleasure to work with everybody. The new folks have jumped right in and gotten to work, and we love that. And I just hope everybody has a Merry Christmas and a restful holiday and look forward to getting back to work in January. Happy New Year.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Nils?
Hi, guys. I just wanted to say Merry Christmas. Thanks for letting me be here by Zoom so that I can make some precautions that I need to make. And I miss you all. I'm grateful for you all and our community. And one of my best Christmases ever, you know, to have you guys a part of what I do. Merry Christmas, please, and I'll be done, and hope to see y'all soon.
Thank you very much. Ms. Andrews?
Well, I will say that although today is the winter solstice, tonight, the Christmas star is shining. So please go outside and see. My mother-in-law has been texting me. It's by the moon, and you can see it without binoculars. So there is some Christmas light that is very much needed. I'll also tell you a very hopeful, sweet story from last week, which you guys may know if y'all saw my Facebook posts. So we have this council roundtable, and you're, you're going to see it roll out in January. We're going to roll out to all thirty five municipalities. But last week, we had a Zoom call, and Birmingham City Councilor Hunter Williams made the point, talking about the homeless population in our area, and was trying to say, this is not a Birmingham problem. This is not a Homewood problem. It's not a Mountain Brook problem. This is a area. This is our regional problem. And the next day, Don Lupo announced that they were opening the warming station at Boutwell for three nights. And Kimberly texted the thread and said, hey, guys, this was like at nine o'clock. I mean, this wasn't early. This wasn't the day before. I mean, it's like at nine o'clock on Wednesday and said, hey, guys, what do y'all think about just trying to go out to each of our individual cities and try to take donations? So we sent out, I texted Melody and the mayor and said, can y'all send out a Everbridge? And, you know, every, all the other cities went to their respective, you know, outlets to communicate with folks. And Melody and Beau and Robert and Amy and everybody just jumped to work, and donations started showing up immediately at City Hall. I did not even get my newsletter out until noon because I wasn't home, and I can't figure out how to do it from my phone. At noon, I sent it out. I said, be here by three. People started showing up immediately, filled my car. We had to pack another truck from the city that Berkeley loaned us. Thank you, Berkeley, if you're still here. Last second, I texted Jeff Martinez at the track shack and said, hey, do you guys have any extra gloves? He's like, yeah, come on by. He was home with COVID. So I ran by the store, and they gave me a box this big of gloves. And so it was water, food, gloves, blankets, hats, scarves, oranges, you know. Anyway, two carloads from Homewood. So we planned to all be there together, so we all pulled up at the same time, and Don Lupo was speechless. I mean, he was just, it was so sweet, and everyone came and unloaded our cars, and we all visited, and, you know, lots of folks standing in the front of Boutwell. And anyway, the next day, I sent out another newsletter and said, hey, I'm going to go back down there because we've got some more stuff. And, and then Mountain Brook went back on Friday, so we kept three solid days. So I would like to make a commitment to do that, you know, as done maybe on a monthly basis, because I know there were so many people in the community that were ready to. So anyway, my point is, there's some love and light right there and some hope for the season. Now, the bad news. I apologize that I emailed y'all this today. I really was not in front of my computer all day. And, and so I didn't get a chance to get this to y'all on an email. But I will tell you that based on the unified command call today, we're up to five hundred and ninety-six cases yesterday, two hundred and two in the ICU, a hundred and fifteen on ventilators, sixteen to eighteen deaths. They were trying to figure out how to classify that. So quote Dr. Wilson, scary. And the concern, the concern right now is that the numbers of folks in public safety that are getting COVID positive tests. But they are looking forward to planning, they're looking ahead about, as far as planning the vaccine and getting that message out, and that's going to be rolling out. You're going to start seeing that roll out between January and March. So obviously, the first line, folks, the doctors that have been getting the, the shots and the long-term care. So one B, group one B is seventy-five and older, plus any remaining frontline workers. And that means like frontline, public safety, et cetera, not just hospitals. One C is sixty-five to seventy-four years of age without medical conditions. One D is sixteen to sixty-four with medical conditions and remaining essential workers. And then phase two is everybody else. So anyway, so I hope, that, that brings a little bit of hope and light, too. And then lastly, I wanted to give you our litter getter numbers, which I told you I would on the target location, which I didn't get until this week. So the target location has collected to year-to-date, two hundred and twenty-three pounds of trash, fifty-five of which was recycled. So that's taken, if you know where the location is, it's right where the target is. There's a bus stop right there. If you're standing at that bus stop, you just turn behind you, look at the creek, it's right there. Fifty-five pounds of that was recycled. So we have ten litter getters in the entire Birmingham area, and this year, we collected twenty-five hundred and eighty-four pounds of trash. That's all I have.
Guys, Jennifer forgot one thing.
Yeah.
She was also running around town delivering groceries to me and taking care of me. That's why.
I was happy to do it. Happy, happy.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews. Mr. Harden?
I can never top Ms. Andrews. Let me just state that.
I was just thinking, we need to switch y'all so that.
Right. I mean, I just, when I took this job on, I decided I just was never going to be able to live up to her. Merry Christmas to everyone. Also, just my condolences to Melanie Jennings. And I mean, that, that, that's, if people don't think that COVID is real, just, I mean, that, that's a real reality right there. I think we've had a tough year in many ways, but I think the city and the city council has done a great job of just making sure our city is going straight in a, in a, in a good way, and Mr. Kendrick's helped. And so I'm, I'm proud of what we've accomplished this year in such a difficult time. I'm done.
Thank you very much. All right, just a couple of other announcements. The first being that the, I've talked with the mayor and with the, some of the department heads. And with everything going on with COVID, City Hall will be closed to the public beginning tomorrow through July, through July. Sorry to get your hopes up. Through January fourth. It will, we will reopen on January fourth. Now, there will still be people up here working and able to answer phones and all that stuff, but we're going to close it off from the public, and signs will be posted down there. City Hall will actually be completely closed on December twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth and on New Year's Day.
We're actually open on New Year's Eve, which is different, but we are.
You are, we are open on New Year's.
But not to the public, but we will be here.
Not to the public, but, but the, y'all will be here on New Year's Eve.
And we're going to post, I'm going to send to Brian as soon as we get through here and downstairs, like we did before when we were closed to the public, that we'll post the department head's phone numbers from everybody that's here at City Hall. So if we need to meet downstairs or if we, if we can't do it via phone or scan, and we need to go outside to do something, we will have the numbers downstairs like we did before.
Okay.
So they'll be posted.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Also, I would just echo what everyone else has said about Melanie Jennings and her husband, Bug. Melanie is a dedicated worker here who we all know and, and love. They have, she, she and Bug were about the most loving couple that anyone could ever see. And so it, we, everyone, please keep Melanie in your thought, thoughts and prayers because this, this is going to be a struggle for her, and we just, we just want her to know that we love her and can do whatever she needs for her.
And I will say too, also, Bug was the Assistant Public Works Director for the City of Terrence. So Terrence has a loss as well now, an employee. So he worked there for twenty-seven years. He's still working there, so. But yes, she definitely, Robert, not Robert's not here, but she's definitely a big asset to the finance and city clerk department, and she is really devastated.
She is.
So please keep in your prayers.
Lastly, just thank you to all of you. I appreciate each and every one of you and what you do for the city and your dedication to the city and everything that you bring to the table. So I, it has been a rough year, to say the least, but I agree with Mr. Harden. I'm proud of the way that our city has handled it and the ways that we have dealt with it, and will continue to deal with it, and look forward to a brighter year in twenty twenty-one and working with all of you. So one last thing that I forgot. We don't, I guess we don't really have to do it until our meeting on the eleventh, but just so everyone knows, the eighteenth is MLK Day. So we will not be having a meeting that night. We will probably do double up again on the twenty-fifth. But we'll, we'll make sure between now and the eleventh. And then we've got another problem with President's Day in February, so there's probably going to be another one that we do in February. So just be prepared for that, but we'll look to it.
Probably on the eleventh.
Is there something going on on the eleventh? I don't, I don't, I don't even think we have a football coach yet, so I don't think it's a big deal. Maybe, maybe. All right. Well, Merry Christmas to everyone. Happy holidays, and we will see everybody in January.